Good morning. We are going to call the meeting to order and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 29th meeting.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Any additions, corrections, or discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next up, we have the MCBDD Leadership Academy here. Stacy, would you like to give us kind of an overview of the group?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning. We're glad to be here today. So as you know, we do our Leadership Academy, and this is the third class? Third class? I was, oh, we're moving right along. So before I start, I want to introduce our leaders, future leaders. We have Shannon Harris, we have Nick Ryder, and we have Kevin Winchester here today.
Welcome.
So they're very excited to be here. You know, things they're working on, they're continuing to work on their interview skills, refining their leadership goals. We will be, they will be graduating September 22nd, and they'll be at our board meeting for that graduation. And they're going to continue to work on their goals and how they can impact their community. I do know that Shannon has asked to share a little bit with all of you, so I'm going to allow her to take the stage.
We're going to get you a microphone.
We're going to get you a microphone.
Real quick, it's coming from the back, so.
That way people that are watching online can hear you.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, just a second.
Thanks, Miles.
So hello, my name is Shannon, and the reason I joined the Leadership Academy, I thought I should join the Leadership Academy, was because I feel like I can speak for others that can't speak for themselves if they need help, and also to hone in on my own, my own, like, leadership skills and more advocacy skills for myself, even though I'm pretty well versed in it. I wanted to be more versed in it, and also, my angle in the class is to be a peer-to-peer counselor.
That's great.
Very good.
Excellent.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome. Again, we're just really proud and glad that they could be here today. The next thing I want to do is, we would like to present a proclamation to you. So our board has put together a proclamation for you, so I'm going to go ahead and read this to you. This is a letter of recognition and appreciation. Whereas, access to safe, dignified, and accommodating restroom facilities is a fundamental necessity for all individuals, including those with developmental differences, seniors, and many other citizens with complex medical or mobility needs. And whereas, the Medina County Commissioners have demonstrated leadership by overseeing the installation of the first fully accessible universal changing restroom in a county building, showing a broader commitment to human dignity, family support, and equal access to public spaces. And whereas, this universal changing restroom features critical accommodations such as an adult-sized changing table, accessible layout, and privacy enhancements that go beyond standard ADA requirements, serving individuals and families who have long faced barriers to public participation. And whereas, by creating a model of inclusive design, the Medina County Commissioners have set a powerful precedent for the future public infrastructure and demonstrated that our community values and respects the needs of every citizen. Therefore, we, the members of the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities, extend our sincere appreciation to the Medina County Board of Commissioners for their leadership in advancing accessibility and inclusion. We recognize this initiative represents a significant and lasting investment in health, safety, and dignity of all residents and visitors, and we celebrate this milestone as a defining step forward in making our county truly welcoming for everyone. So we really, we really appreciate it. We know it was a big step, and you've stepped out of that comfort zone, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Appreciate the recognition.
Okay. Brian for picture?
Where is Brian?
Hold on, Holly's getting him. Have some of them be in the picture. Come on up and be in the picture.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, let's go down.
Let's go down by Shannon. Let's go down by Shannon.
Come and be in the picture. We'll do it this way.
Yep.
You guys stand right here. You are tall. You're really tall.
Here we go.
That's better.
Well, thank you all for being here and being part of the meeting, and thanks for the acknowledgement, and we hope to see more of those in the future, too. I think there are plans in the municipal court.
Yes.
As that gets, gets built up by the city, so the city will be, will be the, will be the ones to take credit for that. So, but thank you again for being here, and congratulations for your, for your achievements. Next up, we have public comment regarding any pending resolutions. Is there any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Saying that, we'll move on to resolutions. First up, Jeremy Cinco is our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Jeremy.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number two for the Marx Road Water Main Replacement Project, and the second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to certify delinquent utility account balances in accordance with Sections 6103.02 and 6117.02 of the Ohio Revise Code.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Holly Muirin, HR. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personnel changes resolution today, we have five new hires, one in transit, one at County Home, and three in sanitary, nine rate increases, one at Job and Family Services, two in sanitary, two at County Home, one in building, one in planning, one in transit, and one at Senior Adult Services, one lateral position control change at Job and Family Services, one leave of absence at Dog Shelter, two resignations, one in maintenance, and one at County Home, one termination at Solid Waste District, and one probationary removal at Solid Waste District.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, finance, Brett Thomas. Morning, Brett.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have 10 resolutions for you this morning. Our first one is cash transfers. This is specifically for the County Home, bringing us up to date with those expenses for an amount of $260,732.91 this week. Our second resolution is authorizing a transfer from the various departments for the county insurance policy. There was a very last-minute change on this one, as one of our departments wanted to split their fund groups a little bit differently, but the net amount of $291,463.74 does not change. Our third resolution is an agreement for a service coordinator between Family First Council and the Medina County Health Department for the amount not to exceed $67,000 for the next fiscal year, that is July through June, for Family First Council. Our fourth resolution is approval for intake and referral and service coordination services between Family First Council and Catholic Charities. Catholic Charities runs a large portion of that program, and they're a huge asset to it. The amount for this contract is $280,000 for the year to provide the intake and referral services. Our fifth resolution is acceptance of the OCJS Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant for the Sheriff's Office. We had approved this in prior meetings. This grant totals out to $42,344. 10,586 of it is local match, so the grant itself is for $31,758. Our sixth resolution is declaring excess property. And our seventh resolution is for the purchase of 6,400 gallons of regular gasoline for the engineering center. As usual, Port's Petroleum is coming in as our low bid at $2.095 per gallon. Our eighth resolution is expenses for travel for the county engineer for the statewide flood plan management conference in Columbus. Our ninth resolution is for other, expenses for other officials for travel, nothing out of state this month, or this week. And our 10th resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $923,753.46.
I'll make a motion to approve the 10 resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Brett. Next up, Matt Springer, County Administrator.
Good morning. I have three resolutions for your consideration. The first one's accepting and awarding a bid for the Human Service Center restroom project. We opened these bids last week, and Crown Commercial Construction was the lowest and most responsive at a price of $227,217. Second resolution is approving an amended agreement with Greater Cleveland RTA. This was actually approved last week. There was an amendment needed by RTA's side to take us through the end of this year, and then the agreement would be renewed annually thereafter. And then the third resolution is authorizing a recommendation to Corsa to serve as Medina County's insurance broker for the next policy year. This was an extensive RFQ process that we went through. We decided that Taylor Oswald was the most responsive broker to represent our interests, so we would be requesting authorization to make that request.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Next up, we have department updates. Laura Toth, we're going to start with you today.
Good morning.
Good morning. That folder's huge.
That's a keeper.
Yeah, right. Well, I guess, nigga. I'm happy to report that we had an audit last Friday from Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging. They come down, they are our largest grant tour. They grant us about $600,000 a year, and we received no corrective actions. That is a huge deal. Usually, there's some kind of paperwork. We don't have quite any order. They, I didn't say we didn't have it, but maybe not in the order they want us to have it. But this year, everything worked out, so we're, I'm really proud of the staff. We were having quite the celebration Friday afternoon after they left, so that's a great thing. I do have six-month numbers I can review with you in packs here. Mr. Hambley comes to our Advisory Council meetings, and I just thought, oh, this is going to be a preview for you for, for this meeting today. But I'll go as quickly as I can through, through the handouts. So the first page you have is the service breakdown totals per municipality or township. So the total, the number of trips we've provided thus far in 2025 is 7,940. The total number of meals delivered is 21,494, and the total numbers of meals served in a congregate setting is 4,204. That includes Wadsworth Suprema Center, and you will see if you go up that column just a little bit, that the voucher program so far, we've used 1,950 vouchers, which is just a huge number. It just goes to show the success of, of that program down there. The next page is just a breakdown by month, so you can see, you know, month to month. We're in the mid-3000s with meals delivered, and we average around 700 congregate meals served per, per each month. The next page is a chart, which I really like, because if you're not a numbers person, it's great to see visually of the home-delivered meals by month. If you look at the orange line, which is on the top, those are 2024 meals, and I remember through the end of '24, talking about, you know, we might have to add another route. We have seven routes. We don't want anything to, you know, get too high. We want to make sure people have their lunches on time. But you can see what's happened, the dark blue line that ends at June, that is, is 2025, and over the last three months, meal, the meals delivered have gone down quite a bit. So we are staying steady at seven meal routes. It is the lowest number of meals we've delivered since 2022. I don't really know if this is just a, you know, a quirk in the data or what. I mean, we're going to keep an eye on that. I'm not really quite sure of what's causing that anomaly. I'm assuming it's going to go back up, but we will definitely keep, keep watch on what's going on with that little dip in meal delivery. The second to last page in your report is transit by month. The same thing, we average right around 1,300 transit trips per, per month. And you can see the number of clients there, too, is around 165, I would say, is the averages. And then the last page, do you have the last page?
Mm-hmm.
With the transit costs, I want to make sure. Okay. Those are our transit costs that I started keeping last year. Last year, we spent right around $200,000 on transit. We budgeted thus far for, for this year, $240,000 anticipating an uptick in that cost. Our cost for transit through six-month is $97,825, which is good. Transit did get a new billing system in June, so our June bill is not quite accurate. I'm assuming they're going to bill us for just a little bit more, but I think that's around, I think we're short in just that month, just a couple thousand dollars, I think, that we're going to owe them. So we're still keeping on track, on track with that $200,000 spent for transit in 2025, which is a good thing. A couple of numbers that, that you don't have that are just interesting. In April, we started, we worked with IT and were able to pull how many people call the main line. We were doing this by hand previously, and it was not accurate. That is not any worker's fault. We have several people answering the phone, covering lunch, and you know, there's, there's all kinds of different things that happen. So since April 28th, we've received 2,902 calls on the main phone line, and we average right around a little over 900 per month. So it's going to be interesting to watch. We have really busy call times, like open enrollment, which is October, November, when people call in January for, in February for tax appointments. So it's really going to be interesting to see those trends, so I'm glad to start keeping that data. Okay, upcoming, any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Upcoming, in August, we have our last two picnics on the patio, one Friday on August 8th and on August 22nd. The 22nd is our luau, so that's our last one of the year, and we will have the sheriff's ice cream truck there. It's pretty exciting, on hand for the festivities. I have the farmer's market report. We are at, let me get the right paper.
Is it possible it's in that giant folder?
It could be in the giant folder. Oh. I don't know where it is. Here it is. Phew, I was going to be like, I don't have a report. Okay. We are at, 387 people have signed up for farmer's vouchers. As I've said in prior months, in 2024, we were at 349. So we have already had a lot more people sign up, and $19,350 worth of funds have been issued. The state, we were at, like, our max for Medina County was like $19,250. So as we have had more people applying, the state has put more funds into the account, and right now we have up to $20,000 that we can dispense. We can always call the state, too, if that, if we get, all of a sudden, get a bunch of people that apply. We have, so redeemed benefits, people have spent $3,892, and unredeemed benefits are $15,457. So that's about a 25% redemption rate of the funds that have been issued. There could be issues with cards in the mail, because people, a lot of people like that physical card, even though a QR code can be used. So that could be part of the issue, but it's certainly not the whole issue of why 75% of these funds haven't been expended yet. So we were talking about, I do have emails of everybody. We were talking about trying to put out, you know, a mass email. We certainly put social media alerts out, trying to get people to spend those funds, but I just wanted to give that report. So people signing up, great, but we need those funds redeemed. So hopefully, they have till November 30th, so hopefully.
That's good to say, too. Just when, well, now it's the season, the crops are coming in.
It's getting good. Corns out there.
Now it's really good. So, yeah, so that does pick up.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see next month. I'd love to see, like, even 50, even to double that would be exciting.
Do you, do you track by card, too, or is it just the overall dollars? Because some people maybe have used all of theirs, and others maybe haven't used any of it.
Um, I'm not sure if the reports have that ability. I have the ability to know where people are who receive, because there's no farmer's market in Wadsworth, for example, so Suprema seniors, like, do you know how many people in Wadsworth signed up? So I did, and I was able to pull that 49 people in Wadsworth have signed up, which is really good. But how many people have used per car?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but I have somebody at the state I can email about that. That's a good question.
Well, I'd be, yeah, I'd be curious to see if the people who are, who are actually using it are using a higher percentage, and some people just haven't used it at all.
Exactly.
Then probably it is an outreach, outreach question. So it probably is either way.
I think we'll see the next couple weeks.
Yeah.
The usage will probably go up.
Everybody's waiting for that.
I hope so.
That local sweet corn. Yeah.
Well, tomatoes, cucumbers, they're going on a list.
Bad year for tomatoes.
It's not a good tomato year?
Bad year.
Don't tell me that.
Everybody.
Mine is. It is.
Mine are doing great.
Are they? Well, you should have, should have entered.
Well, I know where you live, Commissioner Hambley. You better watch those plants.
I got a fence and dogs.
We have two major construction projects starting next month. Our craft room will be upgraded courtesy of the foundation is funding that project. So Medina County Maintenance is going to start the demolition, tearing out the cabinets, the week of August 18th, and then we will have new flooring that's going to be installed from InterFinish and cabinetry that will then go in from Royal Cabinet Design Company. The project is financed through, again, the foundation, and the project total for that is about $36,000 for that upgrade. So that's really exciting, and all our art groups are like, we can't wait. So, but the bigger project, our much larger project, is the upgrading of the bathrooms in the Medina Center, which we just voted on. Thank you so much. We will begin meetings with Crown Commercial next week, and we will have a better timeline for the project. We're hoping to start in very early September, and Senior Adult Services is funding that project. So that'll be an in-budget project for us. I am unavailable for September due to meetings and a vacation, but I wanted to advertise that our 90, our 90 and over party is set for Friday, September 12th. It will be at the Eagles in Medina. Because of the bathroom project, we moved it off-site. The Senior Adult Foundation has sponsored the hall for that, and I believe they will also be sponsoring the catering for that. Commissioner Hambley is going to be there to pass out certificates. So that is a really special celebration for us, and we're looking forward to it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Have a great couple months. I know, all these papers. I think I'm going to steal that big folder. I mean, you know, acquire it. Thanks. Have a great couple months.
Thanks, Laura. Appreciate the updates. Next up, planning services, we have Denise Testa.
Good morning.
Good morning, Denise.
Okay, so to start off our August Planning Commission meeting, is this Wednesday, August 6th, at 6:30 here in the Administration Building in balcony B. So we are returning home, and we're going to have a low-key celebration as we return home. We also have a, an August concept plan that we're reviewing in Sharon Township for our September meeting. We have text amendments in Homer and Chatham Township, and a map amendment in Brunswick Hills. We also, most likely next week, will present a resolution for an RFQ, for a development agreement and subdivision regulations review as well. For our 2024 Community Development Block Grant, the Lodi project is complete, so we're very happy about that. We're just wrapping that up. It did come under budget, which we're really happy about, so you may also receive or consider a resolution with a budget amendment for CDBG projects. I will be presenting to Medina Creative Housing, a Fair Housing presentation this month, and then I also have scheduled five communities where I'll be presenting about our planning services, opportunities, as well as a Fair Housing presentation as well. So that is continuing on. I'm almost halfway there.
Now, you're also doing that with Barb.
Barb Walton. Yes.
With our solid waste plan.
Yes, we're, we're tag-teaming, so.
That's great. Good idea.
I'm going to actually the Westfield Village this, tonight, and they gave us two and a half minutes each, so I've got to talk really fast. We also have completed two zoning inspectors meetings, also known as ZINC. Our next one is on August 19th, and we're continuing the discussion with the Building Department. So that was a very good meeting in July, so they recommended or requested that we include them. The Health Department and Prosecutor, I very much appreciate, as they are also attending these meetings, and they've been very helpful with the discussions. Fair Ground Strategic Plan, our survey responses are up to 727 responses.
What's the deadline?
So they're keeping it open for now. So if, if someone would like to fill out the survey before it closes out, probably this week, they can certainly go to, actually, it's on our county planning website, as well as, I believe, the Commissioner's website also. So we're very excited. Our next step, I'll be working with Chuck Stiver to schedule the focus groups, and those will be completed by teams, team meetings, and then I will reach out to each of you, as we would like to also add an additional focus group with community leaders. So I'll send you a quick email to get those recommendations, so we can reach out. And I'd like to hold that one in person, if possible. Finally, I'm attending on Friday, August 8th, the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, the Planning Directors' Meeting is, actually, that's this week already, my goodness. So I'll be out of the office that day. Are there any questions?
Great job on the Fair project.
Oh, thank you. I'm very.
Good feedback. They were on site, and good feedback from the Fair Board that they spent the whole day there, two days, I think.
Two days, and they really, you know, they were in golf carts all over. They really made the most of their time and talked to a lot of people.
Oh, yeah.
Excellent.
It was wonderful.
I'm glad. I'm glad to hear that. Yes, thank you so much.
It's exciting that that's underway. Thanks, Denise. Okay, next up, we have a Commissioner's Resolution. This is reappointing members to the Medina County Home Advisory Council, and there are three members who are continuing to serve. It's Thomas Sass, who represents the general public, Mary Vance, representing senior citizens, and Scott Miller, representing Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion, second, discussion. Appreciate those three for their continued willingness to serve.
Indeed.
Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. And next up, we have public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Sir? Yes. If you might come up, come on up to the microphone, and then if you could, just share your, your name and your address for us. That would be great.
I can do that.
Great.
You can hear me from back here. I think it was my teacher voice.
We can hear you, but for, for the, the TV audience, it's better with the microphone, so thank you.
What's your ratings?
Well.
They're not that good.
Depends on what we talk about. Yeah.
My name is Ron, Ronald Brady, 3122 Pioneer Way in York Township, one block west of the Buckeye School Conglomeration. I'm here with a complaint. I don't, my neighbors told me to come here. I don't know whether I'm in the right spot or not to complain, but the cable company has drilled through my yard for the third time in two and a half years, and I brought some pictures of what my front yard looked like for the third time. The top three are what it looked like for two weeks. Sunday, they came, well, they dug three slit trenches, three foot deep, beautifully square, would have made a Marine sergeant smile. The bottom three, Sunday, they came and removed the dirt, put the sod back in, but you can tell by the pictures, they're, it's dead. So I'm hoping somebody in the county can intercede for me, and I don't know the name of the company that did the work. So I'm hoping somebody in the county can intercede for me, and I don't know the name of the company that did the work. They came in white trucks, no logos on it. And the workers didn't speak English. So I didn't, what I learned was from the neighbors. So I don't even know whether I'm in the right spot or not.
Do you know, was it, was this part of Frontier? Were they the?
I'm told it was, but I don't know the truth to that comment. But that's what the neighbors say it was. Apparently, the company that was there last sliced through all the cables, but you still have Wi-Fi and phone.
Yeah.
So.
Well, appreciate, I actually was going to bring this up in our discussion session. So because there were a couple of folks that I talked to at the fair last week who've had similar issues, and we've talked about it before in Mountainville Township, the folks I saw at the fair last week from Mountainville Township as well.
For, yeah, we get calls from all over.
Yeah.
Where you have this expansion going on.
And we've, I have reached out to the Mountainville Service Director and then also our county engineer, and we've shared, I think, previously a a number to call Frontier. I've also heard at different times that that number is just a voicemail, you leave a voicemail. Have you reached out to that number? I did. Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, I would love to think if there if there were some other avenue from permitting or even, you know, fines or things like this when these things are upset. But from all the conversations we've had, we don't really have any authority to exert over the the process, which is which is disappointing, because many residents in many parts of the county are experiencing right now, and it's been, my understanding is, the conduit's been fed, and then they're waiting for the wire. So what must have happened when they finished it up is the wiring must have finally come through. But in my neighborhood, it's been at least three months since the holes have been dug, and the wiring hasn't come through yet either. So.
I I just had a thought about it Sunday after they came. The old-fashioned way of doing it was for all the companies involved to get together and put one big five-inch pipe in and run all the cable through and share the cost. But Ohio law doesn't permit that.
Correct, correct, as well as the process of the the funding for this. You have to realize the hundreds of millions of dollars nationwide that's put into the expansion of fiber, and it's all about return on investment. You live in a good neighborhood. I don't, I live on a main road. I still have just old copper cable going through. And I'm in Brunswick, the largest city.
You're getting fiber optic cable all over.
No, we do.
Not yet.
Not where I'm at. So that the the thing is, is there's hundreds of millions of public dollars are gone without any conditions for regarding service or prices or any or other requirements. In fact, if anything, the state of Ohio has loosened the regulations in the installment of these, I'll just say.
Sometimes the old-fashioned way of doing things are better.
I I would agree with you, and normally, like, the government does have some, local governments do have some power and authority over local utilities. But since these are federally regulated, we literally have no, virtually no authority over that. We can influence, we can give you phone numbers, and we have the same complaint, we've had the same complaint over at Hinkley, over Medina Township. And in a lot of regards, they've violated people's property rights and been able to literally walk away from it, and that's unfortunate.
Well, I'm hoping somebody can intercede at the government level. They can put a little more pressure on than I can.
The other, the, that was the conversation I had had just recently at the fair, and the other suggestion that the the residents made that I said it certainly wouldn't hurt was reaching out to Max Miller's office, since he is, you know, your congressman, our local congressman, and that it, a lot of this does tie back to federal funding. So, you know, they could certainly exert a little bit more pressure than we can in these situations. My understanding is that the township representatives, at least in Mountainville, and I'm sure in York, too, because incidentally, the service director in Mountainville is one of your trustees, Chris Cosman, so he's the one who, he's actually reached out to them, too, as has county engineer.
Where is he located at? The man you just?
Oh, he he lives in York, but his day job is in Mountainville, so he's reached out to to Frontier as well. So and has, quite frankly, gotten as far as anybody else has.
We're all trying to pretty much intercede.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're at their discretion and their mercy if they want to listen to us.
And the answer, I don't accept this answer, but this is the answer they get. Well, we've got contract, you know, this phase is done by this set of contractors, and this phase is done by this set of contractors, and we don't have control over when they come through. And again, I don't like that answer, but that it explains where.
I don't like it either.
Right, right. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Thanks for sharing. Is there any other public comment? Nope. Seeing none, move on to discussion session. Denise, do you have anything for discussion? Matt doesn't have anything. Okay, look around. Kyle, nothing.
Yeah, first of all, I want to congratulate the fair board on a great week. It looks like everybody had a wonderful time. I I'm sure that Greg's going to have more details on his next report from the county home, because I don't have any details about Friday night and the chickens and turkeys. But he emailed me to say that he had a record donations for the county home, two sheep, nine swine, and two beef, which is amazing for the county home, and we really appreciate the donations. So thank you so much.
I was just going to say, yeah, the weather started a bit rough.
Yes, and ended good.
Almost perfect weather.
By the weekend, it was perfect.
Congratulations, everybody, and and the fair board, obviously, done a great job coordinating everything.
Yep, I'll say the same thing, and those were, those were two finished steers. I don't know if I've ever seen those get donated anywhere, but it's going to be great. The county home will have that that meat. That'll last a long time. It'll be good, local beef, too. So good for them for for receiving that. And I don't have anything else to add, but it was, it was a great week of the fair, and they did get the weather dialed in by the end of the week, so couldn't have had more fun. So.
I will make a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee.
I will second the motion. Motion second, we need a roll call.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. We will adjourn from there.
Thank you so much for coming today.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.